I'm calling to order this hearing. This is a public hearing, a joint public hearing of the committee, the whole and the committee on education. I'm Phil Mendelson, chairman of the council and chair of the committee of the whole. And with me is council member David Grassel, at large council member, who's chair of the committee on education. Today is Friday, October 23rd in the year 2020. The time is 9:04 in the morning. And this hearing is being conducted virtually live via the Zoom video conference broadcast platform, as well as council channel 13, the DC council website, which is www.dcconsole.us. And I understand also on Facebook. The subject of this hearing, this morning's hearing is Bill 23-515 entitled, "The Statewide Educational Data Warehouse Amendment Act of 2019." The session was introduced on October 25th, 2019, at the request of the state board of education. The stated purpose of this bill, and I'm reading from the transmittal legislation, excuse me, the transmittal letter. This legislation amends the State Education Office Establishment Act of 2000 to require the Office of the State Superintendent of Education to publicly report data relevant to understanding teacher retention and attrition, including information on teachers' experience, years at the school, demographic information, type of credential, and teacher preparation program. This data is not currently publicly available. The lack of such data makes it difficult to understand the extent and impact of the problem, its disproportionate effect on our most at-risk youth, and how best to address the problem. The bill also requires OSI to submit an annual report with school, local education agency, and state-level data on why teachers decide to leave the teaching profession, and about the use of long-term substitute teachers in schools and unfilled vacancies that remain at the beginning of a school year. I would note that I believe, in addition, the bill authorizes that the State Board of Education shall have access to district government officials and to all district government official documents and public data that are material to the exercise of its development and recommendations to the district government. So that in a snapshot is what this bill is about. There are 27 witnesses, in addition to government representatives from the Office of State Superintendent of Education and representative from, with the president of the State Board of Education. Because we have 27 witnesses and because we are time limited, since this is a virtual hearing, I'm going to call witnesses in groups of 14, and that'll get us to the 27 witnesses in two panels. I'm going to turn to my colleague, council member David Grassel. If he has an opening statement, I shouldn't just say colleague, but co-chair, and then I'll call in the witnesses. Mr. Grassel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you taking the lead on this hearing, and I do have a brief opening statement. In recent years, the District of Columbia education efforts have benefited from a number of distinct advantages, one of which is our teaching force. DCPS teachers are the highest compensated in the country, and that has forced the pay for charter schools teachers to be increased as well, though we still have a ways to go in leveling the playing field. Another advantage of the district is the wide breadth of people capable of doing data analysis, and they already are doing significant amount of data analysis. And it's also one of the reasons why I believe the research-practice partnership the chairman and I worked closely on creating last year will be a very big success. What I have learned during my time as chairperson of the committee is that if you ask for data from OSI, the deputy mayor, DCPS, and even the public charter school board, and then you actually put the data out there, there are a number of competent people who will engage with the data and do analysis. In fact, a number of reports and analysis done by our colleague Mary Levy has utilized the data found on my Dropbox in the committee on education. Through the oversight process, OSI has been able to release raw data, and the public has been able to draw their own conclusions from looking at this data. This is the way that I believe it should continue to work. This is also what happened recently when OSI and the New Teacher Project released a report on the teaching force in the district, something we had a roundtable on less than a year ago to perpetuate this conversation. So I want to thank all the witnesses that are here today. Thank you to OSI and the state board, and hopefully we can glean some understanding of why the state board thinks this bill is necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank you, Mr. Grassel. I don't see, I do see one other council member, Councilmember Bonds, if you have a brief opening statement?
I do not, Chairman. I'm just very happy to be here and hear directly from the experts on this bill. So thank you very much to you and Councilmember Grassel.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonds. So let's call in the first 14 witnesses. Scott Goldstein, who's executive director with Empower Ed. Tanisha Holder, who's an Empower Ed council member. Shannon Hodge, who is the founding executive director with DC Charter School Alliance. Kate Gaskill. Frasier O'Leary, who is a member of the State Board of Education from Ward Four. Mary Levy, who's an education finance and policy analyst. Leah Gimble, who is a teacher in the DC public school system. Chioma O'Rue. Josh Boots, who's executive director of Empower K-12. Marion Babcock. Benjamin Williams, who's co-chair of the Teacher Retention Committee with Empower Ed. Candace Smith, who's executive director of Urban Teachers. Stacy Beck and Nicole Baum. Pause a minute while they're all being let in. I believe the way we do this is that everybody who wanted to testify had to contact us by the deadline. Then we're given a link or registration number to get the link. And so I believe everybody can get into what we call the waiting room, and they can watch the hearing, and then we would let the first 14 in to actually participate. The hearing notice had indicated that four minutes or less time if there are a large number of witnesses, and there are a large number of witnesses. So you're going to be on a three-minute clock. I'll be a little bit flexible, but we'll cut you off if it goes too close to four minutes. Mr. Goldstein, you are first, and good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for holding this hearing today. My name is Scott Goldstein, executive director of Empower Ed, which was founded to take on the challenge of teacher turnover here in DC. There's no debate in the research. Teacher turnover harms student achievement, school climate, and student relationships that are key to long-term success. It's extremely costly and a significant setback to schools that are undergoing improvement efforts. As you know, DC's teacher turnover rate is indisputably higher than comparable districts, and it's a problem we must address. Doing so requires a full and continuous accounting of where we are and where we need to improve, which why this legislation is so critical. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we've been sounding the alarm that this crisis will only exacerbate our teacher turnover challenge. In our recent surveys since the spring, we found that between 35% and 50% of teachers are currently considering leaving their positions. This is the highest number we found was in the last two weeks after the DCPS announcement. Educators, especially with children of their own, are facing an unsustainable work-life balance. They are doing nearly impossible jobs without the typical joys of their in-person interactions with the students they love. In particular, we believe that we are at risk of losing our most experienced teachers, who tell us that they are considering retiring early, and teachers of color, who are more likely to be at risk for COVID, have family members who have underlying health conditions, and children and family members who they need to care for. Making it worse, DCPS is still implementing the Impact Teacher Evaluation this year, where administrators who have never taught virtually themselves are forced to evaluate teachers doing the best they can under difficult circumstances. I've heard from many principals who wish so much that they did not have to be adding this unnecessary stress to their teachers' lives at this moment. But now I want to highlight a few ways in which this legislation can help us address the long-term teacher retention challenge. One, this legislation requires the reporting of teachers departing each year, not only by school, but broken down by race, type of preparation program, years of experience, and more. We know that to recruit, support, and retain more educators of color, which is critical, we have to have an accounting of where we are. In fact, Empower Ed teacher leaders will be presenting to council members this winter an exciting plan to support the strengthening of the pipeline of teachers of color in DC. But that work cannot happen without a clear and up-to-date data on how schools are retaining these educators already. But knowing this data on a school-by-school level, we can learn from the best practices and ensure a teacher workforce that reflects our student body. Second, knowing from which teacher preparation program departing teachers came, the system can invest in the programs proving to be most effective and replicate that work. We know that certain programs, especially those requiring clinical expertise or experience, lead to longer retention. We need to see who is doing that well in DC. We strongly call on the council to amend this legislation by adding a requirement that OSI conduct a universal exit survey of teachers every year, for teachers in both sectors, and make public the results. A survey that will seek to understand the reasons teachers are leaving. And currently, while DCPS conducts a survey that is not routinely shared, charter schools do not have a universal exit survey. We have no consistent yearly citywide data on teacher departures. You may hear arguments today about data privacy. All of that can be easily solved, and it must be weighed against the enormous benefits of the community knowing how schools are doing on teacher experience, diversity, and more. We decouple and de-identify data all the time. You may also hear arguments that OSI already does much of this, making a bill unnecessary. But the report on the teacher workforce last year was the first time much of this data was presented. And while it was extremely helpful, it was not at the school level and did not include much of what this bill requires. And without legislation, there's no guarantee this kind of data will be shared annually. So I applaud what Councilmember Grassel said at the beginning, that when people have data, people will do great work with it to provide improvement, and this gives us more data. So that's a great thing. To put it simply, improvement depends on a plan, and one cannot plan without the data needed to target the right interventions and improvements. This bill is an important, if obvious, step to tackling this problem and ensuring all of our students have loving, excellent teachers and mentors that stay and grow with their schools. We hope you'll quickly move to mark up this bill and approve it before the end of the council session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Ms. Holder?
Hello. I prepared a more informal speech, but here we go. So everyone is a genius, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will spend its whole life believing that it's stupid. This ubiquitous quote was stated by one of the most revered minds in history, Albert Einstein, who did not speak until he was five years old. But he devised one of the most scientific equations, E equals mc squared. I'm going to exemplify the type of learning that occurred in my classroom before my capabilities were questioned and the disrespect became too much. As a teacher, I am tired. According to research published by the Learning Policy Institute in 2017, teachers who enter the profession through alternative certification pathways are 25% more likely to leave their schools and the profession even after controlling for their students, schools, and teaching conditions. My alternative education pathway was TNTP teaching fellows. To this day, I don't know what TNTP stands for, but I do know that they lost funding. What a symbolism. Common Core standards, writing 11 through 12.1, .4, reading informational texts, 11 to 12.3, and .4, reading literary texts of the same standard. What do you understand from what I said and then did? Did you know that I taught Starmia Denson-Jackson? Did you know she confided in me? Did you know that I cried to the day that she is no longer? Hashtag say her name. How many teachers can attest to this feeling? As a teacher, I am human. In one semester, a span of three months or its equivalent, I gained a vehicle. Did you know that I'm first generation? I lost my foster mother. I carried a child. I was hospitalized and had to be on leave. Did you know that I was a stressor for my students because they prayed for me? My students wake me out, wake me up out of my sleep to let me know that they made it home tonight. As a teacher, I am important. I am valuable. I matter. Teachers report a lack of administrative support have the strongest relationship with teacher turnover. In a model controlling for other factors, teachers who strongly disagree that their administration is supportive are more than twice as likely to leave their school or teaching than teachers who strongly agree that their administration is supportive. In my humble opinion, that dynamic sounds like quid pro quo. As a teacher, I deserve to feel invested. I am an ally. I am deserving. I am capable. But as a teacher, I am disrespected. Edgar Schein, a functionist, said in his book, "Most of my important lessons about life have come from recognizing how others of a different culture view things. We do not think and talk what we see. We see what we are able to think and talk about. And we must become better at asking and do less telling in a culture that values over-telling. Did you realize I combined informational and literary text? Were you paying attention? What did you learn? Write a connection. But they said she does not teach. No, I did not just teach, I educated. Like Lucille Clifton, every day my kids survived, we celebrated. And I just made an illusion. Thank you for your time."
Thank you very much. You got it, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. Shannon Hodge?
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson, Councilmember Grassel, and members of the council. My name is Shannon Hodge, and I'm the founding executive director of the DC Charter School Alliance, the local nonprofit that advocates on behalf of public charter schools to ensure that all students in the district receive the great public education they deserve. I'm here to testify about Bill 23-515, the statewide educational data warehouse amendment act of 2019. Understanding our city's teaching force is of paramount concern. We absolutely need to have confidence that our city and schools are doing everything possible to retain effective teachers. However, the bill before you is an ineffective way to advance that cause. Understanding teacher retention and attrition in the district is not a reporting issue. It is a research issue, and one that deserves to be fully researched. We need to build upon years of work on this very topic in this very city. For example, over the past few years, the Staffing Data Collaborative helped school leaders learn about local and national research on retention and how it could be used to improve the learning and teaching environment in their schools. DC schools administered the insight survey to teachers for years to understand firsthand what factors teachers considered when deciding whether to leave their schools. And many DC schools have analyzed teacher equity data and developed plans to make sure that their students have effective, experienced teachers year after year. None of this is reflected in the bill before you. Researching teacher retention and attrition in the district is essential to improving educational outcomes for students most at risk of academic failure. Yet the report proposed in the bill before you lacks both the depth and the foundation of the work that has recently been done in the city to understand and improve teacher retention. And it will leave more questions than it answers. It will not tell us whether the teachers who are leaving are effective or not. It will not tell us how DC's teacher retention compares to that of other major metropolitan areas. It will not tell us the strategies that the city and schools should implement to retain effective teachers. If we truly want to understand and improve teacher retention, a report will not suffice. We need research conducted by independent, non-governmental organizations that have the capacity to do the work. Fortunately, this council has already established the best mechanism for conducting this type of research project. The District of Columbia Education Research Practice Partnership established just last year. Rather than undermine its own legislation by passing the bill currently before you, the council should devote its energy to ensuring that legislation it has already enacted is fully implemented to improve the quality of knowledge about teacher retention in the district. An effective exploration of teacher retention in the district would build upon the work that has already been done and is being done in this area. And I encourage the council to use the previously established research-practice partnership to do so. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. Kate Gaskill?
Thank you for allowing me to share my story today. My name is Kate Gaskill. I walked into Eastern Senior High School as a student teacher in the fall of 2013, and it was with a very heavy heart that I cleaned out my classroom this past June. I was a highly effective social studies teacher every year I taught. I was named the 2020 DC National History Day Teacher of the Year. I have a master's degree in education and American studies, but I'll take no more of the committee's time discussing my resume. Instead, I would like to share my experiences with DC public schools. I speak from the heart and without an ounce of malice for my former school, my home, Eastern, which continues to have the most talented, smart, loving, and giving staff that the district could hope to have in one school building. When choosing to become a teacher in this country, one understands that her life will not necessarily be an easy one. But DC public schools create circumstances so untenable that most of their workforces leave simply because they cannot endure the incessant top-down initiatives, the lack of agency at the school level to make decisions for our own kids and the communities we serve, and the consistent messages of teacher blame. DC public schools' refusal to move on from the empty language and blind policies informed by the early 2000s ed reform movement, I believe, has unleashed untold damages on community schools. There's a severe lack of trust between central office and the schools. Teachers and staff, I would say, walk away just even from the personal interactions of most central, of most interactions with central office, feeling talked down to, not heard, and usually by people who have fewer years' teaching experience in the district itself. And this is a very unique and vibrant place to teach. If I could suggest anything to the district in terms of teacher retention, I would start with central office staff members, those who work in curriculum, culture, recruitment, retention, and require a one-year service for every two years they sit in a cubicle at central office. Schools are vibrant communities, and no one has any business instituting policies for teachers and students unless they have been in our halls and our classrooms for an extended period of time. Despite making thousands of dollars from the Impact Teacher Evaluation System, it was a primary driver for my decision to leave the job, the staff, and the kids I loved. There wasn't a single year where I wasn't named highly effective. But impact never made me a better teacher. It stifled innovation and creativity. It created a culture of fear. It robbed us of joy, and ultimately, it colonized my mind. I saw nearly every teacher in my department cry because of this arcane system. It was unfair to teachers and administrators in my building who were tasked with conducting these long observations rather than responding to the social-emotional needs of students. I do remember a former instructional superintendent referring to his unannounced visits to teachers' classrooms as blitzes, as when an entire defense rushes a quarterback, or as this history teacher will remind you of the origins of the term when the Army and Air Force of Nazi Germany would invade a less defended country. So clearly, this instructional superintendent, in the language he chose, a district leader, did not believe he was on the same side of the teacher, who was daily in front of children. We had learned their birthdays. We'd had relationships with them. We'd written their, we'd read their writing on tattered notebook papers. But rather, we were a defenseless country to be invaded. Let's make no mistake about DC public schools, despite the problems created and perpetuated by adults who refuse to listen. Serving the district's children and adolescents is the privilege of a lifetime. It angers me to my core to watch decisions being made that give lip service and Twitter-friendly photo ops to social-emotional growth when, in reality, these ultimately end up being empty promises that are then put back on the teachers in their own individual classrooms to live with.
Ms. Gaskill, I'm going to have to cut you off. And we don't have a copy of your statement, so it'd be helpful if we got.
I emailed it last night. I can email it again.
Good morning, lady and gentleman. I am Frasier O'Leary, the Ward Four representative on the DC State Board of Education and the chair of our Teacher Retention Committee. In January of 1971, I began my teaching career after a very successful student teaching term at Garnet Patterson Junior High in the fall of 1970. I quickly learned that real teaching and student teaching were as different as night and day. I was fortunate enough to have been surrounded by dozens of educators who helped me through my formative years. Without their assistance, I'm sure that I would have been looking for a different career. I am still a teacher. I chose the Teacher Retention Committee because the percentage of teachers who left DCPS and the public charter schools averaged close to 25% from 2014 to 2019. We wanted to find out why teachers were leaving their years of teaching experience, the preparation they received in college, and their professional development experience in their schools. In order for us to be able to find out the reasons, we needed the information from all of our LEAs. The assistance we received was minimal at best. Even though we were unable to get support from the majority of the charter schools and from DCPS, we were able to publish a meaningful survey that allowed us to see that the main reasons that teachers left their schools were the lack of a supportive, a supportive climate in the schools, especially for younger teachers, and the Impact Evaluation System. The other major reveal was that many of the younger teachers did not receive the kind of support that I received many years ago. One thing that you cannot teach is experience. And mentoring and professional development for new teachers is one of the most important avenues to a teacher's success. That's why this bill is so important. If we want to reduce the attrition of teachers in our schools, the passing of this bill and the implementation of its asks will be a major step in transforming the teacher retention landscape and allowing the information about our schools to be shared with our communities. Sharing information to our communities is one of the major things that hasn't happened since March of 19 of 2017. And that's something that needs to be looked at when you talk to the leadership this afternoon in your hearings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mary Levy? You are still muted. You are now off camera, and you are unmuted.
Because I had to move over to my big screen. Good morning. I'm Mary. I'm Mary Levy. As an education finance lawyer, a budget and policy analyst, and a parent of DCPS alumni, I have worked with data and policy in the district education for 40 years. And this includes transparency issues. We need public reporting of the data relating to teacher retention and attrition, and we need a lot more information about why teachers leave so as to inform what to do about retaining them. The research indicates very strongly, and I've got some footnotes, plus the report I did for the State Board of Education with more of the research literature. It indicates that teacher retention is harmful to student achievement, and the more so to the achievement of low-income students. It also reflects that replacing teachers is expensive. The district has very high levels of turnover, even as compared with other cities, which means we need to keep tracking the levels and collecting information on why they are what they are. I prepared both the 2018 and the 2019 State Board of Education teacher attrition reports. In order to do this for DCPS, I had to lay out each school's teacher rosters for several years, side by side, and compare them manually to see what the level of turnover was. This is point-in-time analysis. It meant that I missed teachers who either came late or left early. For the charter schools, I had to download the annual reports, one by one, and copy into a spreadsheet manually the number of teachers and the self-reported attrition rate. The term attrition was not defined. It was just there. And the term teacher was sufficiently vaguely defined that I could tell, looking at rosters, that it wasn't consistent from school to school. But it was the best we could do from publicly available material. I think that as a way of producing this kind of important information, this is absolutely insane. I don't know why you would want to have somebody like me doing that when professionals could be doing it based on electronic data. And of course, knowing the level of teacher attrition, which is all I work with, that's just a first step. What to do about it is much more important. that's just a first step. What to do about it is much more important. The proposed legislation lays out the kind of data we need in much better fashion than I could ever do from existing sources and directs it to be done. I urge you to adopt it. And since I have a minute, I'm going to add that I recently did a paper for the State Board on publicly available data sources.
You actually are over your time.
I am. Okay. Well, I will just say that I still conclude that the council's website is the best single source for information on the web. That really should not be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levy. Leah Gimble?
Good morning, Mr. President and Councilmember.
Good morning.
My name is Leah Gimble, and I'm a current math teacher in TLI at Phelps East High School. I'm also currently enrolled in Johns Hopkins Masters for Administration and Leadership. If I continue to teach after this year, I will have outlasted 70% of my teaching colleagues in DCPS by staying in the district for more than five years, based on the report the State Board put out about two years ago. I would like to begin by talking about my experience in DCPS. I started teaching in 2016 at Dunbar High School after I graduated with a degree in mathematics at the University of Chicago. In my first four years teaching, I experienced four different principals and four different co-teachers. By my third year teaching at Dunbar, I was the senior teacher in the math department. That means no other, I had been there longer than every other math teacher at the school. The year I left Dunbar, which was 2019, to go be a TLI at Phelps, almost 48% of the teaching staff left with me. When I changed schools, at Phelps, myself and my entire math team were new to Phelps. Every single one of us was new. I have watched so many teachers quit around me. I've watched teachers quit in the middle of the school year. I've watched them teach over the summer, quit over the summer. I've watched them quit on the first day of school. I've watched them quit once a principal changes or when a new principal comes in. And when I began teaching only four years ago, the only thing I wanted was to be able to go to somebody for advice, to find somebody who was in a similar position, who I could say, hey, how can I do this in the classroom? Without nearly any seniors' teachers around me for advice, there was no one I could turn to. By my third year, I was the person that teachers were coming to for advice and support because I had been there longer than most of the staff. It's an incredibly difficult job to teach, and it's isolating. And I understand why teaching teachers quit. But this is what, this bill can be part of a solution. I teach math, and I teach AP Calculus and Geometry. So when I ask students to solve a particularly difficult question, my problem, my first question to them is always, write down what you know and write down what you need to know. Once they've identified the information that they have and what they're trying to do from it, they're equipped with the tools to begin to solve the problem. We need to model the same behavior. All research shows that consistent teachers and staff are better for students. DCPS, high rate of teacher turnover, is the problem. To begin to solve this problem, we need to begin by finding the data. It takes years for teachers to become part of school communities, and we know that teachers are leaving, but we don't know the scope of the problem or necessarily know why. I'm testifying for this bill so that this information can become readily available. And as a whole, we can begin to start solving this problem, and teachers don't find themselves in the same position that I did when I began teaching. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gimble. Choma Aru? I'm told is not here. Josh Boots?
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. As Executive Director of a nonprofit focused on education data, I strongly believe in the use of data to drive institutional improvement in the education sector. Therefore, thank the State Board for its focus on collecting and using data to inform educator policy and practice. Research on effective teaching in the district is essential to our pursuit of reversing the impacts of the pandemic and closing outcome gaps for our students. Good research requires good data. This is why I believe it is important that the Independent Research Practice Partnership and its Advisory Committee, so keenly designed by this council to have the right balance of executive and legislative representation on its steering committee, including a SPE representation, should be responsible for coordinating data collection with AUSI and our local education agencies to address our community identified research priorities. The RPP, once it is selected and organized, will have the combined independent expertise of data warehousing, architecture, business rules, and on-the-ground data accessibility to make recommendations for AUSI's account, uh, collection systems. The RPP also has the independence to ensure analyses of teacher data are robust and comprehensively address top issues like teacher retention. Let's give the RPP a chance to be the reliable source of analysis that supports systemic improvement by tabling this legislation. As the RPP gets up and running, AUSI should continue its work on the teacher reports by continuing to report educator elements on the school report cards and updating educator workforce report when appropriate. Should the council consider moving this before for a vote, I suggest two amendments. The first would allow the Independent RPP and its Advisory Committee to be the body that collaborates with AUSI to identify elements that should be collected in its data warehouse. And the second amendment would be to be, uh, to remove the list of defined data warehouse elements from the bill as they are not exhaustive. But just later, defining a list might actually prohibit AUSI from collecting important data, like, for example, teacher effectiveness, professional development opportunities, and absenteeism, elements that have been historically collected through the U.S. Department of Education's Civil Rights Data Collection and the DC Staffing Data Collaborative. Again, I applaud SBE's focus on data and research, but I am concerned that this bill may restrict the city and research practice partnership from being able to appropriately and comprehensively research the concerns that were laid out in the bill's introduction. Thank you for your time this morning, and I'm happy to address any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Boots. Marion Babcock?
Good morning, councilmembers, and good morning, fellow witnesses. I applaud your efforts today to codify an annual collection of teacher data. Having read the report dated October 3, 2018, regarding the study commissioned by AUSI that has become the foundation of Bill 23-515, I'm wondering why the data collection of principals was omitted. We not only have a teacher shortage, but we have a principal shortage and a data shortage as well. I have noted four quotes from that study to serve as guideposts for my testimony. Excuse me. The principal is the single most important person within a school, especially in the district, where more than most other places, both DCPS and charter school principals largely control who teaches there and for how long. Number two, frequent principal turnover, according to consistent research findings, results in lower teacher retention and lower student achievement, particularly at high poverty and low achieving schools. Number three, as with teacher turnover, DCPS principal turnover was highest in wards five, seven, and eight, and least frequent in ward three, while charter schools did not follow such a pattern. And number four, mid-year departures are extremely disruptive for students and schools. How many teachers and principals leave their schools at any point in the mid-year? A robust data set must also include the principal's outcomes. Evaluating the characteristics, such as responsibilities, support, and autonomy principals receive, will also hold superintendents and the chancellor's deputies accountable for their impact on principal turnover. For me and many other families representing all eight wards, we have suffered the separation of our principal just two weeks ago. Blindsided by the removal of Principal Trogish at School Without Walls, DCPS leadership replaced a high-performing student center leader with an instructional superintendent and overlooked two highly qualified assistant principals as interim leadership. They destabilized our community, and they put an undue social emotional burden on students who are already fatigued by this pandemic. Parents and teachers question what future impact this heavy-handed removal of our community advocate will do to our school vision. Principal Trogish maintained a high teacher retention rate, a blue ribbon status, and a top-performing school. And when DCPS leadership was pressed for answers, they admitted this was not in the best interest of the students and would not comment further due to personal matters. A public education demands a strong data set for transparency, and I urge you to further amend this Bill 23-515 to include principal-based outcomes. I thank you for your time, three minutes.
I think, thank you, Ms. Babcock. Benjamin Williams?
Thank you. Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Ben Williams, and I'm the co-chair of the Teacher Retention Committee of Empower Ed. I'm also a high school social studies teacher in the district, and I'm currently in my seventh year teaching in DC. One core reason I started working with Empower Ed three years ago is because I was and remain concerned today about the academic, psychological, and emotional impacts on students when good, effective teachers leave the classroom. I see today's hearing as a sign of progress in the city. Today's hearing, to me, is a sign that the city is willing to acknowledge and begin to confront the teacher turnover crisis facing us by publishing the data that we need. I want to thank the State Board of Education for their leadership on this issue and for bringing public attention to the 25% annual teacher turnover that we have in the city, which is 30% annually, according to AUSI. Growing up in a suburb of Columbus, Ohio, I could depend on the stability of teachers in my public school education. For far too many students, parents, and families, that privilege does not exist in our city today. I've seen the self-esteem of students diminished, the morale of teaching staffs lessened, and heard and seen teaching staffs forced to start over year after year with young teachers in many schools throughout the city because of the citywide problem of losing qualified, effective teachers. Bill 23-515 is a step in the right direction to systemically address our teacher turnover crisis. Transparency is key in this fight to keep great teachers and recruit new ones in our city's classrooms. We need to know school-by-school data on teacher experience, prep programs, and race to ensure that DC's kids have qualified, experienced teachers and principals who know how best to teach them and who look like them. This leads me to my last and arguably most important point, which is to highlight the need for transparency on this issue. The council should amend this bill to also require AUSI to conduct a universal exit survey. This move will allow us to have clear, indisputable data on why teachers are leaving each year. This amendment can work to solve those problems across DCPS and charter schools. The public deserves to have clear data on this issue to guide school improvement. Thank you for your sincere interest in this matter. I hope that you vote to advance this bill and to amend it by adding a universal exit survey across both sectors. Our public school system will improve with that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Candace Smith?
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Candace Smith, and I am the Executive Director of Urban Teachers, a nationally recognized teacher recruitment, development, and support organization, which has partnered with public schools in DC for the past 10 years, bringing in 165 new aspiring teachers this school year alone. We are a stakeholder, customer, and driver of the data outlined in the proposed legislation. We also rely heavily on state-collected data to help us plan, shape our strategies to drive change, and understand overall trends in the local teaching profession. Three key lessons stand out from our years of seeking, understanding, and applying system and state-level teacher workforce data. First, state-level agencies have a central, crucial role in convening stakeholders to make teacher workforce data visible and understandable to all stakeholders, particularly in DC, given our complex landscape. Second, teacher workforce data presented without full context and an understanding of the underlying factors behind it can limit the ability to drive action based on findings and risk implementing solutions that don't address the underlying issues. Finally, teacher workforce data is at its best when all key users, generators, and influencers of that data are at the table throughout the process, including teachers, from defining metrics and what we wish to collect to contextualizing and making meaning from data to applying it to drive action and improvement. One of Urban Teachers' core values is lifelong learning, which drives our continuous program improvement and impact in the district. In our work to understand and respond to teacher recruitment, development, and retention support needs in DC, we have relied heavily on state-level data and analysis from AUSI's workforce report, the AUSI TNTP Staffing Data Collaborative Report, AUSI's Landscape Reports on Students with Disabilities, and the State Board's Retention Reports, as well as our own internal data. These analyses have helped us to understand the state of the teacher pipeline and the supports that exist or do not yet exist for those in the teaching force, informing our strategies and approach. We believe that the data should, the data in this legislation should be a tool for action and continuous improvement, and all of the data referenced in the legislation is extremely valuable. At the same time, as important as it is to understand retention trends, it is equally important to gain visibility into the factors contributing to them, from school-based conditions to teachers' preparation, training, and demonstrated classroom efficacy. We can anticipate additional needs in the course of collecting, understanding, and acting on the data listed in this bill, such as: understanding how retention data intersects with teacher effectiveness data and how we should interpret that information, given the diversity of school models in the district; understanding school level and teacher preparation and support variables that prior state analyses and national research have surfaced as key retention drivers; understanding where teacher retention variability is most impacting teachers and students of color and schools in wards historically impacted by high attrition; and engaging teachers and principals directly to make meaning from collected data and better understand its limitations. We believe that a collaborative, cross-agency approach to data collection proposed here would proactively address these needs and ensure that resulting data and findings lead to our shared desired outcome, action to meaningfully improve and maximize teacher retention. Providing equitable input for the district's diverse stakeholders will ensure that we are together defining what we need with respect to data and what that data is used for. Urban Teachers is eager to be a part of this process and collaborate with state and local agencies, peers, school partners, and educators to fulfill the intention and promise of teacher workforce data collection in DC. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our work and how data informs and improves all that we do. We look forward to continuing to work in partnership with all education stakeholders in the district towards our shared goal of building a more equitable, just, and successful public education system for all of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Stacy Beck?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Mendelson and Chairman Grasso, for the opportunity to testify today. My husband and I are the parents of three DC public school children, a fourth grader at Lafayette Elementary School, a seventh grader at Alice Steel Middle School, and a ninth grader at School Without Walls. I would just like to echo the remarks of Ms. Babcock about the disruptive nature of the termination of Principal Trogish. But then I would like to go back to the subject at hand, which is teacher retention and attrition. I strongly support this bill, based on my personal experience as a DCPS parent. This is our 11th school year with a child at Lafayette, and during that time, we have seen many of the school's strongest teachers leave. When our oldest child started at the school, there were 31 classroom teachers. Today, only seven of those individuals remain classroom teachers at Lafayette. Three of them have moved into subject specialist roles, while the remaining 21 have left the school. In addition, many other teachers have come and then gone within the past decade. Of course, some teachers have moved or retired, but many are still teaching in the DC area. In fact, three teachers have left Lafayette to teach at nearby Gianni or Murch. Lafayette is one of the most highly regarded elementary schools in the district and has a supportive parent community. If Lafayette cannot retain its teachers, I can only imagine how much more challenging it is for other schools. I fear that this problem, like so many others plaguing our school system, is having a disproportionate impact on our most at-risk kids. It is particularly important that this proposed bill requires an annual report of information learned through teacher exit surveys. We need better information about why we are losing so many DCPS teachers and whether the IMPACT system plays a role. Based on the testimony from Ms. Gaskell, which I found really moving, I think the answer is clearly yes. I would also urge you to amend this bill to require the, to require the school system to make public the results of its annual teacher satisfaction surveys. As a teacher said to me yesterday, we're asked to take these surveys every year, but we never find out the results. I suspect it's because they would not reflect very well on DCPS. My final point I would like to make is that if DCPS is truly interested in retaining its teachers, it needs to involve them meaningfully in the plan to reopen schools. What we're witnessing right now is surely going to lead to even more teacher attrition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. And I believe the other witness that I called was Nicole Baum, and that she is not here. The members will have five minutes for a round of questions, and I know that's not much, but with these virtual hearings, this hearing has to end at 12, and I want to leave time for the next panel, as well as the the two government witnesses. And I neglected to say at the beginning of the hearings that the record in this matter will be open for two weeks. It will close at 5:00 PM on November 6. So any of you who want to supplement your statements, you have two weeks. And there were several of you who did not give us statements, or at least have not received statements from Ms. Gaskell or Mr. O'Leary or Mr. Williams. So I just have a, I'm going to make an observation and then follow that with a question. And that is, there's been a lot of testimony about teacher turnover. And those of you who've been paying attention over the last And those of you who've been paying attention over the last year or two know that. The two committees of education made the whole last year and had a hearing on teacher turnover and principal turnover. I believe that it is a critical issue. But this hearing is not about teacher turnover. It's rather about whether we need to codify a data collection. And. And do so in a way that imposes some requirements, even restrictions on Ossi. And whether we need to do this in light of another initiative that the council took, which was to create this research practice partnership. Which although it is not yet off the ground, is moving toward getting off the ground. The partner is being selected this fall, or maybe I should say this calendar year. And in addition, when we talk about data, the DC auditor has the ability to collect data, all kinds of data without any limitation whatsoever. And the RPP law that we adopted requires a data survey by the auditor's office, which we expect to come out. This year. Ossi says that much of this data that's in the bill is already required. They actually have a crosswalk at the back of their testimony and probably none of you have seen their testimony, but it will be posted. What they don't provide is, right now, that is what Ossi doesn't collect is. The name and type of teacher preparation program completed each year. Or the number of teachers who left the profession without remaining in the field of education. Or who left employment to teach in other states and the reasons for their leaving the profession. And then also. Data on the teaching positions that are unfilled with a teacher licensed in that subject area by October fifth of each year. All the other data spoken to in the bill, Ossi says they collect. So having said all that. Let me turn to Scott Goldstein. Why do we need the bill in light of RPP, the auditor, the data that's already being collected?
Appreciate that question. So some have cited the staffing data collaborative as a tool that can be used already. That's a black box. The data is only available to those in the collaborative. So not all those trying to work on the issue and present solutions. So in Power Ed, for example, we do direct work with schools to improve adult culture, shared leadership and ultimately teacher retention. We can access that data, which would be very useful to our work to actually work on the problem and solve the problem. So when I was teaching, for example, people said the insight survey as well, also a black box. The yearly data in my school on the insight survey showed the teachers were about to leave. And showed specific reasons why they might leave, but that data wasn't accessible to the people who could do something about it in real time. It was only accessible far after the problem. And so. All that data was not able to be used in real time to solve the problem, but a yearly accounting of that could really help with that. So I know Shannon Hodge mentioned we need research and independent research, but that can only happen when we have access to data. And I don't think that by creating the RPP, the intention was to have only the RPP be the only person who could ever conduct any education research in DC. By making the data more available, we can truly have independent research more broadly. But also what I really want to emphasize is that we need to have practitioners who are trying to solve the problem. Be able to access the data and not just an independent research body. And that's what this bill would hugely help actually solving the problem. And not just having data available somewhere that practitioners can't access to solve it.
Let me ask the same question of Josh Boots.
Well, I don't think that we do need this bill to do that, one, because it does outline data elements. Whereas there are other data elements that aren't necessarily in there. In terms of like, and also for the collection of the. Also, data, like use of data for improvement and use of data for accountability are two different things. When we make data publicly available, it can change the context in which it is used and collected and not necessarily for improvement. And I do think that Scott and the state board are all geared towards like improvement. And collecting data requires trust and trust requires independence. And sometimes that does mean that it is collected through the Ossi, sometimes it should be, you know, it's collected through the RVP. There's data for improvement and data for accountability, and we should be really thoughtful about both.
Thank you. I'm virtually out of time. Let me say, Ms. Gaskell, I was, I found your testimony moving and I really wish I had a copy of it. It's not to reiterate that point, but I really would like to be able to look at it more carefully and reflect on it. So, thank you. Thank you each of you for your testimony. Let me turn to Councilmember Chairman Grasso if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate all of your all's testimony and your engagement on this issue. You know, I also have a similar question that the chairman raised, and I think I want to give Ms. Hodge a chance to respond to it because. What I look at here is not just about access to data. The RPP, I think, also puts experts in the position to analyze this data and. Then to create the change in practice that we're looking for. That's what's happened certainly in Chicago. And so I'm not, I'm not looking to say, well, just. Throw it out there and have everybody's opinion on it, which I think is a fine thing in some circumstances, but. For me, it's about, key is about having experts look at it. Ms. Hodge, would you like to take a stab at this question as well, please?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilmember Grasso. And I completely agree that the point of the research practice partnership is to make sure that those who are equipped. To do the analysis and make use of the work are able to do so. I think Mr. Goldstein mentioned that, you know, it's important to get the hands of, the research in the hands of practitioners. That is the second part of the research practice partnership. Right? So it's important to do that. I think the notion that all data should be publicly available and anyone can do anything they want to with it. Is somewhat misleading for us in the city. A lot of the data that are out there are misused, the way they're presented is not entirely accurate and things are missed. So for example, if you want to know how. Teacher attrition is calculated in the PCSB annual reports. The PCSB's annual report guidelines spell out the formula that schools use and that document is publicly available on the PCSB website. Experts, people in charter schools know that, and it's important to make sure that we're using data responsibly. And not just being reckless with it. And I think in this particular case, as someone else mentioned, there are a lot of other questions and a lot of other data points we would want. And it's important that the experts be able to identify that and that the research practice partnership get off the ground in a way that allows that to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. You know, for me, the challenge also, I think, is figuring out how we get data out that's useful. Right now, I actually think there's just a tremendous amount of data out there that's already available. I mean. You guys know my website and the council has tremendous amount of data. Most of that is already on the public charter school board's website, on Ossi's website, in the deputy mayor's, you know, realm. And the challenge is how do we filter that data in a way that is useful for improvement in the city? And not just throw ideas at the wall and see if they stick. And, you know, I think, you know, finally, I'll just note that. This law that we put in place for the RPP. Does say that people have access to this data, but through the FOIA process. And so. You will be able to get the data, you will have to FOIA it, but that's, I think, a good way to. Monitor just how much burden is put on the city and how much burden is put on the RPP and on the agencies. And putting this data out, which I support. And so you'll still have access to this data. It's just not going to be the first bite at the apple and. That's because we're trying to preserve that for the experts. And I'll just reiterate that what the chairman said. This RPP is going to be set up. There is going to be an entity chosen out of the entities that have, have. Applied and it will be chosen by the end of this year. So. We're moving fast into this motion. I think there's good precedent that this is the way to do it. I don't think we need this legislation to accomplish that goal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank you, Councilmember Grasso. Councilmember Barnes, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I, I'm listening to this discussion about the opportunity that this bill offers to perhaps. Collect some additional data, make it, whether or not it should be more publicly accessible. But I am stuck with the beginning of this issue, and that is, are we collecting? The data that we need so that we can retain our teachers, retain our principals. And so that we actually can see improvements in the educational product of our city. I mean, that's why you collect data. That's why you study any situation. And I'm not convinced that what we are discussing as far as the data points. Are really going to get us there. So could anyone tell me what you see missing? Because I've heard from several of the witnesses this morning that we're missing things that we should be looking at. And I would like for you to give me a succinct list of things that you think we need to collect that we are not collecting. So that this will help us to retain our teachers, retain our principals. And have a better educational product for our students. Maybe, Ms. Gimble, since you are the senior teacher. In our panel and you've seen a lot and everyone comes to you, I'm coming to you and asking you. What data should we be collecting that to the purpose of improving retention of our teachers?
I mean, I, I teach and I study math, so I know that the more information you have, the more powerful you are. And, I mean, at the school I came from, we'd had tons of teacher turnover. Based on, possibly based on class size, possibly based on behavioral issues, possibly based on all of these things. But we didn't know why the teachers were leaving unless we know. Like how many and what's happening each year. So I think getting kind of any type of baseline data and then connecting it to what's happening in the schools. Can let us see some of the problems that might be existing, right? The year I left my school, I had a hundred and eighty students. I had six classes of thirty. So thinking about kind of what the data tells us and where the problems are. And being able to see where those problems are and then connecting it to what might be happening in the day-to-day lives of the teachers that are causing them to leave. And my understanding of the bill, kind of when I was reading it, is that it not only gives access, open access to the data, but it also forces a teacher exit survey. So we know why the teachers are leaving and we understand what their experiences are. And we can kind of ground the work we do in what's actually happening with the teachers to stop these tremendous rates of turnover.
I appreciate that comment because I'm getting the impression from my colleagues that we're already collecting. Necessary data and, you know, I'm a product of DC schools, my children and my granddaughter. And the thing that gets me is that I can talk for hours with you about what I see. You know, from my Berta perspective. But I'm curious as to how the education community is absorbing what is happening in our community. We spend billion, almost, almost billion and a half on the educational product here in the city. And, and I, and I want to see it, I want to see it better. And I want to see those that are underperforming. Having interest in wanting to perform. And I want our instructors in the classrooms to feel comfortable and to, as you say, educate, Ms. Holder, not just teach. But to educate. And so, I guess as an official and as a grandma. Yeah, I'm a little frustrated as to what, what we are seeing. And this turnover is very, very annoying. And I'm speaking for many, many who tell me all the time that this doesn't seem to make sense. You know, as you said, Mr. Williams, you have to grasp a, a young person's mind and interests and hold on to it. And you can't just, you know, say, oh, next year you'll have a new teacher or you don't know until you walk in the room. So this is, this is very disheartening. And I love data, you know, with my chemistry background, you know, I do and I apply that to everything I do. But the bottom line is that I don't feel that. We obviously are collecting what we need to collect. And I know Mary Levy will school me on that, as she always does. And we appreciate, you know, her input always, but I'm, I'm very concerned and I just was curious as to. What it is that's missing. And I think that's one of the things we ought to be concentrating on. In, in the hearing today, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Additional Chairman Grasso. I know I've run out of time.
Yes, you have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And I always hesitate to cut off a council member. Oh, thank you, Councilmember Barnes. Thank you, each of you as the witnesses. You will be excused back into the waiting room where you can stay and watch. Or however you want. I'm going to call the next fourteen witnesses. James Harnett, who's Chair of ANC two A, Thomas Tock, who is Director of Future Ed. Chista Majid, who is a teacher at Wilson High School. Elizabeth Davis, who is the president of the Washington Teachers Union. Rob Stevens, John Zeidler. Laura Fuchs, who is a teacher within the DC public school system. Ramon Taheri, who is Director of Education Reform Now. Alexander O'Sullivan, Ravi Perry, Sandra McCosco. Amy Johnson, who is a senior fellow at Mathematica and Sarah Mahotra. And I apologize for anybody whose name I. Mispronounced. We're going to begin with. Mr. Commissioner Harnett. I don't believe he's here. So we'll begin with Mr. Tock. And good morning. And you're muted. You're still muted.
Apologies.
Yeah.
Not the first time I've done that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Thomas Tock and I'm a direct future Ed, which is an independent policy center at Georgetown University's McCord School of Public Policy. I very much appreciate the opportunity to testify on Bill twenty-three five fifteen. Future Ed supports the, the collection and public dissemination of information related to the quality. Of the public school teaching profession in the District of Columbia. Research makes clear that teachers are the single most significant in-school contributor to student success. And as DCPS has demonstrated over the past decade, data-driven policymaking can yield substantial improvements in teacher quality. But we are concerned that the legislation as written underplays the collection of data on teacher performance. And we don't believe that the State Board of Education is the appropriate entity to manage teacher data collection. Under the District of Columbia's present education governance structure. We recommend that the council modify Bill twenty-three five fifteen to address these concerns before moving it forward in the legislative process. If it does move it forward. It is valuable, as the legislation implies, to have a detailed demographic profile of the city's teachers. To know who is working in the city's schools, who is leaving and why. But in envisioning how to do that work, twenty-three five fifteen is largely silent on the important question of teacher performance. It is important to know if there are good teachers in the city's classrooms, not merely whether they hold licenses to teach the subjects that they are teaching. While studies have found scant correlation between teacher licenses and student achievement. Researchers have found that teachers rated highly effective in DCPS can be expected to get stronger results. In their classrooms than their lower-rated peers. As a result, not all DCPS teacher attrition is equal. It matters more to the city's students if a highly rated teacher leaves the school system than if a minimally effective teacher departs. Bill twenty-three five fifteen does not call. For the collection of data that would permit these important distinctions. It should. The council should make teacher effectiveness a central tenet of twenty-three five fifteen. It also, it also strikes us that the Office of the State Superintendent. Working in collaboration with the future DC Research Practice Partnership is the appropriate body to shape and manage teacher data collection. Under twenty-three five fifteen and more generally. Ossi has substantial data collection expertise and currently collects a wide range of, of school-based information. Including many of the teacher metrics envisioned by twenty-three five fifteen. Given Ossi's expertise and experience, giving the state board management authority over collecting the data outlined. In the legislation seems counterproductive to us. Thanks again for the opportunity to share our perspectives.
Thank you, Mr. Tock. I believe Chista Majid is not here. Elizabeth Davis.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Davis, President of the Washington Teachers Union. The WTU represents over five thousand dedicated, active and retired teachers. We are dedicated to social and educational justice for the students of the District of Columbia. And to improving the quality of education and support, resources and compensation. Working conditions for teachers who proudly serve our students. Before I began, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to mention the ongoing pandemic. And this afternoon's council roundtable and the reopening of our schools. I understand the council's constraints in hosting a public hearing, yet we live in a democracy. And those impacted by the mayor's decision to reopen our schools should be heard by this body. You should hear from librarians who are being reassigned from high schools to cover CARES classrooms. About the impact it will have on their high school students. You should hear from the technology coordinators in middle schools, who will no longer be able to ensure. who will no longer be able to ensure their colleagues are able to learn and adopt new distance learning tools. And from counselors who will no longer be available to students they have spent years building relationships with. And you should also hear from students and parents about their concern for their safety and for their education. The DCPS plan prioritizes our youngest learners, but at what expense? Yesterday during a press conference, the WTU learned of data points around the learning loss from early, early grade students. The chancellor also emphasized transparency. So I asked, what is the learning loss of our middle school students and our high school students? What amount of learning loss is acceptable for these students? What impact will the transfer of middle and high school staff to elementary school, CARES classrooms where they will not be providing instruction have on our opening plan? I ask that you work with the mayor and chancellor as we have done. And I want to emphasize the core values that DCPS often emphasize, students first and teamwork. The DCPS's plan you'll hear about today has failed on both of these fronts. The WTU and teachers have learned details of the plan via press releases and press conferences. And that is not teamwork. Moving middle and high school staff to supervise elementary school students is not putting those students losing critical supports first. Turning my attention to this morning's topic, the WTU strongly supports Bill 23515, Statewide Education Data Warehouse Amendment Act. The bill would amend the State Education Office Establishment Act of 2000 to authorize the Office of the State Superintendent of Education to expand the statewide educational data warehouse to include additional information on teachers. We believe this effort is long overdue. As I testified to last December, teachers' turnover is a significant problem in the District of Columbia. Our schools and our classrooms lose a high percentage of highly qualified teachers each year. A level of churn that is higher than other large jurisdictions. And it's October 2018 report and its report update to the DC, the State Board of Education, found that average annual teacher attrition at the school level in both DC and public charter schools is and has consistently been about 25%. This is significantly higher than the national average and is higher than other jurisdictions. As we know, that is the impact deeply felt in communities of color and communities with high percentages of students classified as at-risk. The DC State Board of Ed found that the rate of annual teacher departure rises with the percentage of students considered at risk. The district's teachers leave schools with fewer than 20% of at-risk students at an annual rate of 18 to 20%, while schools with the highest percentages lose almost a third of their teachers each year. I want to take the opportunity presented by today's hearing to highlight research undertaken by the Albert Shanker Institute endowed by the American Federation of Teachers on teacher diversity. The data compiled by the Shanker Institute shows a remarkable decrease in the number of African-American.
You're over your time.
Thank you. So I'd like to once again thank the State Board of Education for their work.
Ms. Davis, you're over your time.
Thank you.
And we don't have a copy of your statement. Mr. Zeidler?
It was sent today. Thank you.
Mr. Zeidler?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, thank you. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to provide, to, to give testimony today. As the parent of a student at School Without Walls, I have been recently energized by the untimely firing of our principal, Richard Trogish, to become more engaged with the administration of public education in the district. As a result of the firing, I have become painfully aware of how little transparency there is within either DCPS or the mayor's office with regard to the decision-making that impacts teachers, parents and children. And I'm deeply concerned that there are policies and practices of DCPS that drive teacher turnover and which impacts all students in the district. Although I admittedly cannot yet speak with deep knowledge regarding this bill, my apologies to the chairman, I welcome any change that improves transparency that may shed light on why teachers leave. At a minimum, and if it doesn't already, I would suggest that the council amend the proposed legislation to include the teacher satisfaction survey or some other exit interview, and which will help us all better understand how policies and procedures impact teacher morale. So modified, the bill would further empower the community to better understand what is happening within the school system, as well as to help counter the chilling impact that actions like the firing of Richard Trogish, who was removed from School Without Walls for asking uncomfortable questions pertaining to the mayor's reopening plan, have on the willingness of teachers to express their concerns and to have those concerns addressed. As is clear from the previous testimony, the ongoing lack of transparency and lack of accountability within DCPS by the mayor is a cause of teacher attrition. And it is also, in my experience, a significant cause of family attrition. And one of the primary reasons DCPS remains mired in ongoing scandal and public relations missteps, which drives out those families who have the means to go elsewhere. As a closing note, I wish to urge the council to take action to condemn the firing of Richard Trogish and to act immediately to have him reinstated before his termination is finalized. The mayor's action in the middle of a school year and national health crisis was retaliatory. And in the words of Instructional Superintendent Jellic, "Not in the best interest of anybody." Children and their families have been harmed and the reputation of DC's flagship school put in jeopardy. I also urge you to hold hearings on his firing in order to shed light on this process and to give the families of the Walls campuses an opportunity to have their voices heard, which to date they have been denied. Thank you for your time.
I thank you, Mr. Zeidler. Ms. Fuchs?
Hello, sorry, I'm on my phone because both of my computers are currently involved in teaching my students right now. Because once again, we've scheduled a hearing on education where teachers cannot testify without giving up time with their students. Many have already shared the importance of transparency and figuring out what is going on. I agree with the importance of passing this legislation to shine a light, not just for transparency, but because I believe that some actors will improve how they act and treat their teachers if we know, if they know, we can see them. We need this because so far data has remained hidden and we cannot wait. Instead of tying yourself in knots trying to figure out how to control and filter raw data that exposes your oversight failures, give us the data. It is offensive to teachers to act like you and all the lobbyists have the data you need and care. Don't continue to try and insult our intelligence. One major reason that teachers leave is the lack of basic respect. I have at least five testimonies dated back to 2017 on teacher retention at the State Board of Education because they're the only ones who listen. I've also brought it up countless times embedded inside testimonies on off task topics, including testimonies on para, school budgets and more. We're about to face a teacher retention crisis due to COVID on DC council's watch. This legislation is the least you can do. You can also protect us by demanding answers from DCPS on reopening. I asked a lot of questions on the record in front of the State Board of Education, since you would not hold the hearing in June, and so far we still don't have answers. How will the different size of buildings and student population be taken into account at each school? How will we ensure that we have the necessary PPE? What happens if we don't have all the PPE we need? What are the staffing requirements to ensure safe building? How do we ensure fairness and equity and who can and must attend both for students and staff? Are we allowed to transition between classes? Is it safe? How will we ensure social distancing occurs outside the classroom? How will bathrooms be maintained? What if the furniture we have in our classrooms is not conducive to social distancing? Will it be replaced? Mine hasn't. How should teachers pace for students who are both in-person and online? Are teachers expected to balance the requirements of teaching both in-person and online simultaneously? How will students and families be taught social distancing guidelines? How will social distancing be maintained in physical environment with signage marking throughout the buildings and classrooms? Most of our buildings do not seem to have signage that is adequate. How will student discipline be maintained, especially around social distancing and health requirements? How do we create a loving and nurturing environment when rules must be strictly enforced for our health and safety? How can we teach from behind a mask and develop the interpersonal relationships that we rely on when we've been working with students for months and now that's all going to be destroyed? What happens if a student violates the social distancing, health and safety requirements and puts others at risk? What does socially-distanced teaching even look like? How do we do group work, projects, gallery walks, et cetera? They think we can do this in like two PDs. Are they out of their minds? What about supplies? We will need more and to make sure supplies are clean and accessible. Have we been trained on how to do that properly? Are teachers expected to do it? Who's coming in to do it? Who's the super spreader? How students get to and from school safely still definitely has not been answered. What will our teacher evaluation look like? How in the world can we be evaluating teachers with 40 kids in our classrooms online? And then some people are doing things in person. And we're still talking about using impact as if that is something that can happen. What if we have children of our own? What if we have pre-existing conditions and health risks? And what if we are taking care of those most at risk for COVID? I mean, the list goes on and on and on. And yet here we are trying to contide more data and we're just continuing to perpetuate the exact same problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuchs. Is Rob, I don't believe Rob Stevens is here. So I'm going to call Mr. Taheri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Chairperson Grasso, Councilmember Bonds.
And readily available to parents, students and teachers. When we sweep it under the rug or put the onus on parents and families to seek it out through a complicated FOIA process, we disempower parents and families and deprive decision-makers of critical information. How do parents know if their students' schools have a highly qualified and diverse teaching workforce? How do parents know what prep programs teachers at their schools are coming from? As parents and families navigate our school, it is our responsibility to ensure they have the information that they need. I'm cognizant that I'm also the last person testifying today, so let me take a moment to look forward. This bill cannot be coming at a more important time. Because of the pandemic, the transition to distance learning and the health and economic impacts of COVID on families across DC, we know that we have lost many students when we transitioned to distance learning in the spring and that many students are missing from school and not logging on. Now is the time to be doubling down on supporting our students and making up for lost learning time. But we cannot improve upon and allocate support to what we cannot see. And one of the smartest decisions that we can make right now is in the long term, taking the first steps towards investing in our critical teachers and figuring out what we can do to support them. Thank you very much and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mahotra.
Mahotra.
Yes, I shouldn't struggle so hard on that. Thank you. I am going to admonish several of you because I do not have statements from you. Mr. Tock, Ms. Davis, Mr. Zeidler, Ms. Fuchs, Mr. Taheri, Ms. Mascoso and Ms. Mahotra. And you've made some good points and we don't have copies of the testimony to look back to. So if you would please provide, and again, the record is open for two weeks, we'll close at 5:00 PM on November 6th. We have council members, we have five minutes each round and my five minutes should have already started. I do want to say this with regard to the two witnesses who testified about Mr. Trogish. I am not happy with his firing in the middle of the school year. And whether it's a firing or a sudden resignation, I maybe I would prefer to characterize it as a resignation because he was a well-regarded principal. Not only was he good, but it was disruptive to do it this way and it's harmful that there's no explanation. Although I understand why when there's a personnel matter, the government won't give an explanation. Nonetheless, that's a problem. There was a request that we have a hearing. I can assure you that if we had a hearing and DCPS came in, that we would learn nothing more because they will not give an explanation, especially in public, but they haven't in private either. I also want to say that as unhappy as I am, if I think about what we could do as a council, perhaps we could pass a lottery and state him. I'm not sure we could. But I don't think any of us want the precedent where the political body, which is the council, that the politicians who are the council are legislating who is or who is not a principal. So it is a quandary, but I think it also speaks to what is the administration's fidelity to stability in our schools and working against turnover, whether we're talking about teachers or principals. Mr. Taheri, your testimony seemed to be supportive of the bill, but, and the but seemed to be, well, we get a lot of this data, there's some issues. Could, could you try again to summarize that?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that, you know, in general, we are very supportive of efforts to increase transparency and to make data publicly available. I think our concern really is, and this relates to Mr. Tock's testimony as well, is that we need to understand data on retention and attrition in the context of teacher effectiveness. And we're concerned with a bill that focuses on reporting but doesn't put in place safeguards to ensure that that data is presented in the context of effectiveness and the relationship between teacher effectiveness and student outcomes. I think that's particularly important for the requirement to provide that data as part of the DC School Report Card, as I mentioned, but I think it, it's relevant elsewhere. And then in terms of what's duplicative, I think as many have mentioned here, the Research Practice Partnership would be in a good position to undertake a lot of this analysis. And I think would have every opportunity to make that publicly available. But again, you know, i- if, if the broad underlying intent here is just to make this data more publicly available and to have more people access this information, I, I'd say in, on balance, that's a good thing.
I think, thank you. So I'm going to pivot 180 degrees. Mr. Tock, if I remember correctly, you said that you were opposed to the bill. So one of the witnesses in the last panel, when I questioned them, why do we need this? Said, well, we can't access the data. Or when we get the data, it's late, like the data for a couple of years ago comes out now. Or we don't get the data at all. And they see this legislation as enabling broader access or access where there isn't access and timely access. So why isn't that a good thing?
It is a good thing and I would agree with Mr. Taheri that in general, more transparency is better. And certainly the quality of the teaching profession in, in the District of Columbia is really important. So I would agree with the, the broad sentiment that, that we want to understand who is teaching in the city, who's leaving and why in, in an effort to, to ensure that we have the best possible teaching force in the city. The, the question is, what is, as Raman has said, wha- what is the data that we're collecting? What is, what is our focus? And, and in, in sort of ensuring that we have the best teachers possible in the city. And that means focusing on the performance of teachers and any data that we collect, making effectiveness an important ingredient of, of the information that's available broadly to the public. And then what is the most effective sort of mechanism for conveying that information and managing the system? But I, I do support the, the broad dissemination and access, access to and dissemination of information on the teaching profession. So, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a nuanced response, but, but it's, you know, I think that's the way we should look at this.
Thank you, and I'm out of time. Mr. Grasso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, you know, I appreciate the fact that this is a nuanced discussion and it's just not that straightforward. And we have to all be in favor of greater transparency. But like I was saying earlier, we have to do it in a responsible way that has the people who have the education looking at it from that perspective. Ms. Johnson, I was not clear exactly where you and Mathematica came down on this from your testimony. Can you explain to us whether you support this bill? Or is it tremendously nuanced as well and you really can't take a stance on it?
Sure, thank you for the question. Yes, we do support the bill. And, and basically based on the principle of access and transparency. So when a broader group of people have access to data, you're going to get, I think, very, you know, some, some reporting may be very accountability-based and not what necessarily everybody wants, but giving access to a broad set of people who can do the kind of rich assessment of what's really happening in terms of retention and answer some of those really quick, critical questions just starts to shed light on the, on the problem. So really just access and transparency of data is generally a very good thing. And, and is a critical step towards enabling you to dig into these kinds of challenging problems and start to develop solutions.
And so you think that it's not enough to have a full Research Practice Partnership developed where we have all of that data available to the experts and then the public can access it too for you? Is that what you're saying? It's not enough? Because that seemed to me like a tremendous amount of data. The other thing that we have is all the data that comes into the council that we get through our performance and budget hearings that I've rarely seen many people even bother to dig through. You have all the data on the website that's publicly available at OSI, at the deputy mayor and, you know, other places. So I, again, I get, it gets to a point where I'm wondering if we oversaturate and then we have a diminution of the actual intelligent analysis that makes it hard, I think, for us to weed out what we should pay attention to as policymakers and what we should not pay attention to as policymakers. And so that's my fear.
And, and I think others are probably in a better position to speak to some of that nuanced part than, than I am. Our support is really based on the principle of access to data and.
Okay, I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I don't have further questions. I did want to just make a note, you know, the one thing that DCPS has said about Principal Trogish's situation is that it had nothing to do whatsoever with his raising issues around reopen of the schools. And so to say that on the record to me, I think, is at least fair enough to the DCPS side. Whether or not they're telling the truth on that or not is something that can be debated. The, the other thing that bothers me tremendously about this is when we talk about instability, this is something that is real and is something that we should all be discussing, and the data should prove out. But I didn't see the public or, you know, lots of parents or other administrators jumping up and down and screaming about instability when Antoine Wilson was thrown out of the city for making a bad decision. And, you know, I believe the punishment there did not actually merit, the crime did not actually merit the punishment. And that makes me very upset that we now have this other situation where we have a popular principal who I agree has done a good job, but who may also have made a mistake that was a big mistake, and people are clamoring to say, don't get rid of him, hold hearings, keep him in place. But when we were trying to defend the leader of the schools, knowing this would set us back for two years or more in our work at DCPS, we had people clamoring to throw that poor guy out of town. So the, I don't, don't want to get into this.
No, but can I agree with you? Can I agree with you? Because I fully agree.
Not calling you. I appreciate you standing up there, but the fact of the matter is that we have, in my opinion, hypocrisy in this city.
Yeah, it's hypocrisy because it was not self-serving in Principal Trogish's case. It was not self-serving.
Well, I'm telling you that this is something that I think we all need to understand is that there is a reality in this city that some people who have privilege think that they do not have to apply the laws to them, and they don't have to apply the rules to themselves. And that is not the way we should be moving forward. Do I think Trogish should be thrown out either? No, not necessarily, if this is the only occurrence. But you're the one that's raised what the occurrence is. And the fact of the matter is that there is possibly other things that have gone on with him that maybe the public doesn't know because it's a personnel situation. So I think everybody needs to be just a little bit careful on the accusations that they throw around.
Then show us.
Well, the problem with throwing somebody out in the middle of school year is that then there is controversy. Councilmember Bonds, do you have any questions?
No, Chairman, I don't have any questions of this panel. I think they've been very clear. Almost everyone has indicated support for the bill in the spirit of transparency. And I believe that we have collected some additional areas of concern that we would want to so-called survey for or test for. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonds. I do want to note, after I admonished folks, Ms. Fuchs got us a copy of her statement, and Mr. Zeidler, I see, says that he submitted it, but we don't have it, so please resubmit. Again, thank you, each of you, for your testimony. We're going to turn now to the government witnesses. I really do appreciate the time and the work that you've put into presenting testimony today. So you all are excused from this room. You can still hang out in the waiting room. And I'm going to ask that Shayna Young, who is the interim State Superintendent, Office of the State Superintendent of Education, otherwise known as OSI, if you would come forward. Not quite sure what that means when I say come forward, because everybody just remains in their seats. It's just whether they click a button. When you're ready, Ms. Young?
Thank you. Chairman Mendelson, Chairperson Grasso, and members of the committee of the whole, and I'm the Committee of Education. My name is Shawna Young, and I'm the interim State Superintendent of Education. I am pleased to appear before you today for this hearing on B-230515, the statewide educational data warehouse amendment of 2020. Before I launch into my official testimony, I just wanted to say I've spent a large part of my professional career talking and working in teacher and leader talent. So I'm happy to be here today talking about this, and I wanted to thank specifically all the folks who testified today, and also to Alex O'Sullivan, the state board rep, whose testimony was extremely meaningful and reminded me of the reasons that I also got into this work. So thank you. Teachers are the single most important in-school factor in the child's education. Every student deserves access to excellent teachers. Teachers play a critical role in the life of a child, and throughout our response to this global pandemic, teachers have been an important source of stability. Our teachers and school leaders are making strides every day with our students, and we owe them an enormous level of gratitude and respect. Our policy decisions should reflect the invaluable role that teachers play, and those decisions should be grounded in data, not only on hiring and retention rates, but also about training, experience, effectiveness, and more. Although much of this information is used at the LEA and school level, the Office of the State Superintendent of Education, or OSI, plays an important role in collecting and sharing teacher data, as well as providing support to teachers and locals, leaders, to better serve our students. OSI already undertakes significant work related to improving teacher practice and collecting teacher data. Through the Division of Teaching and Learning, we work to build the capacity of educators from pre-service to in-service through targeted sustained high-quality supports. We strengthen educator practice by providing research-based, high-quality professional development and convenings. OSI has a complete list of professional development opportunities on its website and advertises these opportunities in its Teaching and Learning PD Bulletin and through regular newsletters to LEAs. OSI already collects a significant amount of data from LEAs and schools on their faculty and staff, and we use this data to meet federal requirements and to satisfy local needs. For example, we collect citywide data on teacher shortage areas, as well as other information for federal ed facts reports. Additionally, in response to public feedback, the DC School Report Card provides school-level data on teachers, including years of experience, rates of credential teachers, and rates of certified teachers. And we published, as we heard today, our first-ever district of Columbia teacher workforce report in fall of 2019. We have produced actionable information that is ripe for policy discussion. For example, we see that DC teachers are more racially diverse than teachers nationally, that the majority of teachers have over five years of experience, and that three out of four teachers have an effective evaluation rating as determined by their LEA. We also reported that DC's school retention rate of 70% was slightly lower than benchmarks nationally and among other urban school systems, but that DC is doing much better at retaining effective teachers. As it relates to the bill before the committee today, the statewide educational data warehouse amendment act of 2019 prescribes data elements that OSI must collect on teacher and other faculty. In the appendix to our testimony, we provide a crosswalk between the data that the bill would require us to collect and the data that we collect currently. We also provide a listing of the data we collect on teachers. As you can see, OSI's current collection is already robust. While we are interested in collecting and using data about the teacher workforce, this bill does not require a comprehensive collection of teacher data as it leaves out important information on teacher effectiveness. Further, given the constrained budget circumstances we find ourselves in, OSI is concerned that several of the requests in the legislative proposal may sound benign, but may be administrative complex and may come with cost. For example, in lines 56 through 59, the reasons for leaving profession and tracking where the teacher went next, whether in another state or leaving the field of education, would be challenged to collect with fidelity. These costs could come in the implementation of new activities such as surveys or in activities such as configuring data systems and processes to collect and validate reporting. Should this legislation progress, we urge the committee to work with OSI to ensure that the bill, that the language is clear, cost-effective, and considers the burden on schools, LEAs, and OSI. The bill also requires OSI to compile an annual report by December 15th on the state of the teaching profession and further prescribe the contents of the annual report with unprecedented specificity while neglecting other meaningful policy questions of interest in lines 47 through 53. For example, the proposed legislation only touches on one aspect of policy pertaining to the teacher workforce, namely retention and vacancies. In fact, our teacher workforce report was far more comprehensive than what is proposed in this bill, and that report included information on retention and vacancies, but also teacher diversity, experience, effectiveness, and workforce trends that influence a school's ability to recruit and retain an effective and diverse teaching workforce. We believe this comprehensive report is more meaningful to ground in comprehensive policy conversations on the teacher workforce. Further, the bill includes two provisions that would expand the authority and role of the State Board of Education. OSI opposes these provisions as they overstep the authority and responsibility of OSI as an executive agency. The legislation would provide the State Board with new authority to approve standard procedures and format of reporting requirements for the longitudinal educational data warehouse system. Statewide data collections and procedures are the responsibility of OSI, the agency charged with collecting and reporting the data, and the micromanagement of this administrative role by the State Board would be inappropriate. The State Board does not have expertise in this area, and the State Board approval of procedures could raise the administrative costs and timeline of collecting and reporting data on all schools, LEAs, as well as OSI. We also oppose lines 85 through 88, which expand the role of the State Board. We also, we already provide significant materials to this council as part of routine oversight, and this provision appears to shortcut FOIA and give the State Board access to all district government officials' documents that would be covered under the Freedom of Information statutes in DC Code. OSI complies with existing laws pertaining to freedom of information requests and does not think any other further clarification is needed. We believe that the approach that OSI is taking to address the need for more data on the teacher workforce is more desirable than the one outlined in this legislation. Over the past several years, OSI has built our capacity to collect teacher workforce data and has expanded our scope and collaboration with LEAs each year. Our goal has not just been to collect data. Our goal has been to help LEAs develop effective strategies to attract, develop, and retain the teachers that they need to serve students well through the use of this data. OSI is ready to do more, and we are already on our way to doing this without the legislation. Our progress here is not insignificant. We built a new data collection application and constructed systems and processes to control the quality of the data. As our data sets grow over time, we will continue to share this information in meaningful ways with the public. This legislation should not micromanage or hamstring these efforts. Thank you for allowing me to testify before you today, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I'm doing some quick math. There's three council members on this hearing, and we have, I want to leave at least a half an hour for the state board. So we're going to have eight minutes each for a round. I'm looking at Mr. Grasso to make sure that's okay with him, since we're co-chairs. And I will begin. Although I'm not quite sure where to begin. So OSI believes that it is already doing the right thing to get data to better understand, so that everybody can better understand how to ensure attraction and retention of good teachers. But I would note that the report that you came out with, the teacher workforce report, which is, I think, the basis of your belief that OSI is doing the right thing, has come out only once, and it came out a year ago. Is there another report coming out this year?
We do not have plans for another comprehensive report this year on that data. However, we have expanded the amount of data that we collect and look forward to using it in a variety of different ways to continue to report that data. And that could be in the, in the format of analysis or in public display of that data. And so OSI has taken on the collection of more information centrally in the same way that we have previously expanded our collection of things like discipline and attendance. And so we're following that path in our commitment on the OSI strategic plan of sharing and using actionable data and continuing to expand the amount that we share and make available.
I'm going to cut you off a little bit, only because I have to be mindful of the clock. But that reminds me of when I probed witnesses earlier. The, and the answer that I got was, well, we, meaning in the private sector, meaning some of these nonprofits, meaning some of these organizations that are very much involved in this space and trying to improve public education in District of Columbia, they can't access to data, or the data gets to them late, or the data doesn't exist at all. So when you say you're collecting not only the data you were, but more data, that's what I heard you say, that doesn't speak to, well, these other organizations can't access it.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify. In the past, OSI has collected teacher and principal data in a number of different ways, not all centralized at OSI. In our work with the Staffing Data Collaborative, which is seeking place, which a number of people cited, that was a collaboration between LEAs, our partners at TNTP, who helped co-author that report, and OSI. OSI has since moved to collect the information that we put in this crosswalk in our testimony centrally at OSI. So we have actually expanded the collection, the data that OSI collects and with the purpose of building out our systems and our ability to report it. So what has been true in the past in terms of the multiple ways of that data being available is now centralized at OSI with our ability to report it in the ways that I mentioned in my previous response.
With the ability of OSI to report it, but what about other organizations being able to access it?
Well, we're committed to making it available in, in ways that other people can access it, yes.
Well, I was struck by a statement, why is it appropriate that if the state board wants information, it should use FOIA?
We collaborate significantly with the state board on a number of the matters that we work with every day, and we provide information as part of those routine, that routine work together, including when we worked on the report card and and on graduation requirements. We're collaborating right now on social studies standards. And so we provide information regularly in a positive and proactive relationship with the state board.
So am I misreading what you have in your statement? You say this provision in the bill appears to shortcut FOIA and give the State Board of Education access?
This provision appears to expand the right of the state board to government information, and we're unclear as to the meaning of that. And we already comply with FOIA, but largely with the state board. We partner every day and regularly with sharing information and providing context and presentations on the work that we do together, such as the attendance approvals and, and other matters that are their purview to approve.
So it's not your intent to say that the state board has to go through FOIA to get information from OSI?
No, we intend to continue our productive collaboration. We meet with the state board leadership regularly, as well as attend their regular meetings and provide information that supports their productive discussion on the matters that they approve with us and contribute to policy conversations together.
You attached to your testimony what you called a crosswalk, which I think was helpful, and I referred to it when I asked questions of some of the other witnesses. But really, most of the data, if this crosswalk includes everything that's in the bill, most of what's in the bill is already required except for why teachers leave. Does seem to me that why teachers leave is a pretty important question. So on the one hand, it sounds like we're not disagreeing over too much. That is, most of the data is already required. Maybe the point being, why do we need to legislate to require it when you're getting it? But then it leaves out something that I think is pretty important, which is why teachers are leaving. And I can't believe that OSI would be objecting to wanting to have that information. So can you help me there?
Sure, and thank you for recognizing, as we talked about before, the nuance. We do collect much of this information. We are concerned about the prescriptiveness of the law as written, both in the level of detail as it attempts to describe data elements that may not necessarily be how we would do so or move forward, and in the limitations it may set, as opposed to what we would prefer, which is to be nimble and unresponsive. As it relates to collecting reasons why teachers leave, I think that is an important, one important piece. However, it is, it is generally conducted with anecdotal surveys, and getting good response rates for that type of survey can be challenging. And there may be other approaches to, to get the information. It's not, we're not opposed to it. It is not something that is currently conducted right now and would need to analyze exactly the best way to conduct and support the responsiveness to a survey, which again would provide us some anecdotal information that would complement the rest of our data, but is not the only thing that's important.
I have 28 seconds. One of the witnesses, I think it was Shannon Hadd, said. that teacher turnover is not a reporting issue, but a teaching issue, which is shorthand for saying, all of this hearing has been focused on data and data collection and to be sure there's a value there. But ultimately, what's really at issue is reducing turnover. And we can take solace that our numbers might be better than the national average. I would say, so what? We don't want as much turnover as taking place. So I'm out of time, but the, the fundamental issue here is how do we reduce turnover? And maybe you could take a couple of seconds to speak to that and then I'll recognize Mr. Grasso.
I think reducing turnover of effective teachers is an important and critical step. And we, our, our turnover is higher in D C than in many other cities. I think there is a probably unfortunately complicated set of factors that, that, that influence that. We want to know how effectively our teachers are being prepared, what kind of supports they're getting once they get to a school. And teachers do report and we agree with the, the rest of the body of research that are other, other folks who testified today that school climate and culture is a leading factor that teachers cite when they say that they are going to leave a role. So all of those things are important as we look to retain our teachers and probably all in, in confluence with each other, are areas that we should be investing in.
I'm out of time, I'm sorry. Councilmember Grasso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Young, for your testimony and your participation in this hearing. I want to go back to your Teacher Workforce Report and, and I just want to level set it a little bit and ask you. In OSI's position, what are some of the key takeaways from that report? You know, what should we be doing in, in your mind and in OSI's opinion to address some of the findings that you found there?
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about some of this information as we're trying to use it to improve. I, I think there's a, a number of interesting findings there. We do note under diversity that D C teachers are more racially diverse than teachers nationally. However, there are limits and incongruities as it relates to Hispanic Latino population. And we've heard other testimony in supportive efforts to recruit and retain teachers there. We do note that three in four teachers received an evaluation rating of effective or higher, which is, which is good. And we always want to see that improve. And that and we talk a little bit about demand in areas that we need to, to prepare our teachers. So for example, elementary and special education teachers make up the largest segment of teacher workforce in D C, but the demand is also the highest in those subject areas. So we should be looking about how to train and recruit teachers who have that specialty, who can continue to serve our students so that we have less vacancies in those areas. And as I mentioned, the retention rate in D C is lower than some benchmarks attained by other national urban school systems, but retention rates for teachers effective or higher were higher than, were higher than those below effective. So that is a good sign as well.
Thank you. I think it's important to take a close look at this and I'm glad that you guys did the report and so. But I, I'm, my challenge is that I'm always looking to what end here. I mean, and where are we trying to make change and how are we trying to engage in the data? And, you know, I've asked this before and it does appear like it's the position of the State Board of Education, although my understanding is that there were some concerns about this legislation even within the board itself. But that they, their position is that we should be concerned when a teacher changes positions regardless of effectiveness. And so it's not just leaving the system, but maybe changing into another school or wherever and not look at effectiveness of that teacher at all. Experts on this topic who've testified before the council say that we should focus almost exclusively on our most effective teachers and how much movement is in those populated, in that population. And I'm, I'm just curious, where does OSI stand on this? And then after you've answered that, I'd like you to talk a little bit about what OSI does to try to support the teacher workforce. But I do want your position on this question of the relativity of effectiveness as it relates to teacher overturn.
I think clearly every school wants to retain its, its great teachers. And we should be encouraging that and examining which schools do a good job of that. And there are schools where we can potentially replace teachers who may find fulfilling work in a different, either in a different teaching job or in a different area with us, with a teacher who is more effective. All of those things are important and I think it is important to see both, to tell a full story of teacher retention. You want to be able to recruit and train and, and support teachers in being effective. And you want to be able to retain as many teachers who are, who are effective as possible. So I think you need all of that information to be able to tell a clear story. And I don't think you can just tell the story on retention without also having some of those other factors.
Yeah, I mean, I think my fear is that some of the data, you know, has been pulled together kind of on, you know, on somebody's laptop and then ended up not really understanding the nuance of that somebody A may have moved just to another school or may have been promoted or may have been removed from the school because they are not an effective teacher and therefore had to go. And that the question about harm to the student and the quality of education is relevant here because obviously you don't want to do harm. And I think removing somebody in the middle of a school year or changing them out at the end of the year does and can do harm. But to what extent if they're not an effective teacher anyway? And are, where's the trade off there? And how do you effectively balance that is the question? Go ahead.
I think one of the things that is most important in this work is empowering early districts and schools to use this information meaningfully. You want to have schools and districts who believe in talent and who have proactive strategies to recruit good teachers and train good teachers for the communities that they serve, once they're there and support them. And so one of the, part of the work that OSI has done in our commitment in this, in the talent space is to work directly with districts and with school leaders to say, how do you use this data? Not everyone comes in understanding how to look at information and then use it in a talent mindset to recruit and retain the best teachers. And that's what we want to empower the schools and districts to do because they're the ones working with teachers every day. And as we've seen, you know, climate, culture, feedback to teachers are important as professionals for them to want to remain in a building.
Thank you. You know, I also wanted to mention that you have included some information on teachers in the school report cards. And I, I give you a chance to say what that is, but also how much engagement was done on what data parents cared about when it came to teachers in a school report card? So can you talk a little bit about the report card? And also what extent did you reach out to parents and say, what matters to you in this school report card?
Yes, we did extensive community engagement, as you know, related to the, to the school report card. And teacher information is one of the, is one of the big areas that families and communities want to see information. Families and communities want to see a broad array of information on teachers, including retention, experience, effectiveness, attendance. Families are very interested in the attendance rate of teachers in a school, which is not something we collect today. What we ended up providing on the report card are the number of teachers and school leaders, the years of experience in bands of teachers, so that families can see how experienced in general the teachers are in the building, which is not the same as retention, but a proxy for some of the information that retention provides, not exactly. And then for, we collect rates of teachers in D C that hold a D C teaching certification for D C P S where it's required, as well as teachers who are placed in an area in which they were trained or effective previously. So we tried to provide an array of information that was able to fill, fulfill at least some of that family interest.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that and thank you for your work on this issue. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Grasso. Councilmember Bonds, do you have questions? It's not clear to me if Councilmember Bonds is here. Thank you, Ms. Young. Thank you very much. Let me out recognize Ruth Wattenberg, who's President of the D C State Board of Education. Ms. Wattenberg?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? No.
I can hear you, you can't hear me. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Oh. I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Actually, now I can't hear you. Shoot.
Well, I said, yes, can you? I love Zoom. While we're waiting for you to figure this out, I'll keep talking so you can see, hear me. We had a hearing yesterday or the day before, I'm looking at Mr. Grasso with I think some folks from out of town, like the gentleman who worked on school security in New Hampshire and had spoke to the value of Zoom, that we can get out of state experts. That really helps. But on the other hand, Ms. Wattenberg would have been ready five minutes ago if this was in person.
That's is true.
Do, can you hear me?
Yes.
And I can hear you. Okay, we're good.
So don't touch a single button and please.
I know. I agree. All right. Good morning, Chairman, members of the council, staff and members of the public watching online. My name is Ruth Wattenberg, Ward Three Representative and President of the D C State Board of Education. I am testifying today as the official spokesperson of the state board. I want to acknowledge my colleague Frasier O'Leary's excellent testimony and his terrific leadership on our committee on teacher retention. Also Mary Levy's terrific contribution to our city on this issue, including her testimony today on why the current system is inadequate despite great effort. And the testimony today of so many, including teachers, for whom it was a challenge to lead their students. The state board has been actively tracking teacher attrition in our D C schools for a number of years. In 2018, we released the first analysis of its kind that showed a troubling situation across the city, an average annual school level teacher attrition rate of 25%. In 2019, the state board released an updated report that found the same average rate. This was followed by a March 2020 report based on a survey of teachers who left D C public schools and public charter schools about why they left. Similar to what you heard earlier, it showed that the biggest drivers were such things as teacher evaluation systems, burdens with work culture and workload, need for support for teacher safety and mental health, health and tensions and strained relationships between teachers and school leaders and administrators. I appreciate and want to acknowledge OSI and its former State Superintendent Hanso Kang, as well as interim superintendent Shawna Young, for the report they released last October. It had great information in it. It echoed the state board's report of very high turnover and found that 26% similar to us of teachers did not return to teacher at their, to teach at their school for various reasons. Bill 230515, the Statewide Educational Data Warehouse Amendment Act, was introduced by you, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the state board in October 2019 as an effort to move from ad hoc research and analysis to a sustained and public source of information about our teacher workforce, about attrition and its effect on our students in schools. In short, the bill would do three needed things. First, we'll bring together existing information about the critical issue of teacher attrition into a single transparent source. The state board, as you've heard so far, has relied on an outside contractor to comb through websites, documents submitted to the council and other records to create our reports. But this is not a sustainable practice for the long term. This information is largely available, it is available, but it's not easily accessible. And it doesn't include key information, which I will get to. Second, there isn't additional information that is currently not being collected by OSI that would be incredibly useful for the public, for the government and for others. For example, much of the data is not collected school by school by tracking as we propose, the type of teacher prep programs, teachers attended will all better understand what kind of preparation underlies a long-term commitment to classroom instruction in D C. And it will help colleges and universities themselves to understand the trajectory and success of the teachers they have prepared and what they can do to strengthen that. LEAs can use the information to target their recruitment efforts, for example, just preparation programs that are working for them. Finally, insofar as data exists from different schools and sectors, it's not comparable. This would help make it so. As an elected body, the state board is responsible to the public, the constituents who elected us to be the voice of public education in the district. This bill, as drafted, would expand the information available to the public through annual reporting by OSI to the council as well as through publication on the D C school report card. In summary, if adopted by the council, this bill would ensure that data relevant to understanding the nature of teacher attrition and retention across D C schools would be collected and available annually and publicly. Specifically, it would require OSI to publicly report annual data, including information on years of experience, demographics, type of credential and teacher prep program by school. Would require OSI to submit an annual report with school, local agency and state level data and why teachers decide to leave the teaching profession, about the use of long-term subs in our schools and unfilled vacancies that remain at the beginning of the year. Today's hearing shows clear interest by the public in this information. And we are hopeful that the council will move quickly on this bill so that it can be included in FY 2022 budget. The lack of the data described here and included in the bill makes it difficult to understand the extent and impact of our teacher attrition problems, disproportionate effect on our most at-risk youth, or how best to address it. The board understands that there are concerns about the language of the bill and, and the potential impact on LEAs. In developing the bill, the board consulted with many people in order to craft a bill that would cause minimal impact on schools while providing maximum data for the public. We believe that most of the information being requested here is already a part of many LEAs human resources systems and can therefore be provided without creating new databases or requiring excessive additional effort on the part of their staff. For example, in October 2019, D C P S publicly released Teacher Retention Fast Facts that published school level teacher retention rates for several years. Additionally, some charter schools publish annual reports with their schools and LEAs annual attrition rates. What is proposed here is very doable for these LEAs. It's often done, we just need the information regularly. We understand that the bill will still have a fiscal impact, including a new F T E and a recurring operational cost of $6,000 per year, though it will be higher, $30,000 in year one. The district is under serious budget pressure right now. We understand that. We believe this cost is quite low, especially given the impact we hope this bill will have on increasing transparency and assuring a solid data foundation for research and agency action. Finally, I want to speak specifically about the section of the bill that would equalize the authority of the state board with advisory neighborhood commissions. As the council is aware, A N Cs can by majority vote, request information from any district agency and the agency is required to respond within 30 days. The state board believes a similar authority for itself is appropriate as we represent the same constituents as the A N Cs and the council. Thank you so much. Well, and let me say before closing, we appreciate very much the testimony that we heard earlier related to learning the reasons why teachers leave. And I want to be clear, we do strongly support a universal exit survey. That is implied in this bill by the kinds of data that we ask for. We don't explicitly name an exit survey for various reasons. But we do want it. It should be there. So we hope, so that, that should be implied. Also, the state board is very pleased to hear from everybody about the continued support by members and the Committee for the Research Practice Partnership. I, I believe the purpose and the hope for the R P P is to focus largely on school-based research, looking in depth at how particular initiatives, for example, around the early reading initiative that you all have just passed, or a pre-K program, which gets so much attention, how are these faring and how could they be improved? This is really, I think, the strength that the R P P can bring. It's not meant to be a data collector. We have an agency for that. And that's what we're trying to do is to make sure that, that, that data gets collected that's needed. Thank you very much and I am happy to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wattenberg. We, there are only two council members present and so we will split the time between now and roughly five of us. So that's about 12 minutes each. I'm looking at Mr. Grasso to see if that's enough time for him. One 12-minute round. So let me begin with this. First, thank you for your testimony, Ms. Wattenberg. First, thank you for your testimony, Ms. Wattenberg, and you've been much of the impetus behind this legislation. What about the issue that OSI brings up with regard to the one piece of data that the bill asks for that is not available now? In her testimony, Ms. Young said, "The reasons for leaving the profession and tracking where the teacher went next, and whether in another state or leaving the field of education would be a daunting challenge to collect with fidelity." I think that goes beyond just simply asking the question and getting an answer from a departing teacher that unless it's probed may not actually be accurate.
Well, no, I think that this is part of an exit survey, and I think the point is to find out where the person is directly leaving to. I think that is the point. I'm leaving because I want to go work in the central office. I'm leaving because I hate D.C. I'm leaving because I never intended to stay a long time. I'm leaving because this school is a problem. I think those are questions that you get good results from based on an exit survey. In fact, when we did our survey last spring, we got some very interesting results from those kinds of questions.
So you're not concerned about fidelity, if you will, of the, maybe that's the wrong word, candor or accuracy in the answer? That's a concern to you?
No, I'm very concerned about candor and accuracy. And I think if we have an independent surveyor taking the survey, I have every reason to believe we will get candid responses. As to accuracy, I think they'll be very accurate for, right, for why people left. I'm guessing that what Ms. Young meant is that you wouldn't be able to look at it and say 10 years from now what these people were doing. I'm guessing that's what she said, because I don't see any reason why it would not be very accurate as to where people intended to go quickly.
So let me ask you, I cut you off a little bit because of time. You had talked about cost. The, my staff tells me that you have a fiscal impact statement, but I don't see that. I'm guessing you just have a rough estimate of cost. Is that correct?
I believe John Paul, our executive director, is listening, and I'm going to ask him to get me the answer on that. I'm not, I can't speak directly to that. I think what I understand is that we, the costs were going to be one FTE, and as I say, a small yearly operational cost plus a higher initial cost.
And is that FTE the one who's asking the questions? Because you said a minute ago that there would be a a person, how do I want to say, conducting the survey, asking the teachers why. Is that the one FTE?
Um, I can't. We have an estimate, is what I'm told, and so I don't, I can't speak directly to your question. Part of what we tried to do in this bill is to be very direct about the kinds of data that we really thought were needed, while also leaving it to OSI to put it together. And I want to say two things. One, insofar as OSI feels that our involvement itself, the way it's stated in here, is a problem, we are not committed to a particular way of being involved. We don't want that to hold things up. But we do care a lot about the kinds of data that get collected, including in an exit survey. And we would suggest that insofar as you try to deal with our role in this, that you also include stakeholder voices. I say all that because that's part of why we leave it a little open as to how exactly this exit survey would be done. And so I can't speak to the funding or how how the estimate was arrived at.
So the one FTE might be the one who does the survey and maybe not?
Correct. And maybe the operational cost deal with some contracting costs around the survey. I'm not sure.
Okay, let me move on.
And what can I, I just want to say one other thing about that. The DCPS does an exit survey now. I mean, this, it's, the problem is that it's done, I think, in a way that people may not feel candid, and everybody doesn't get the data. So I don't really see this necessarily as something that has to be a huge extra cost, but rather something that has to be coordinated and done under the auspices of someone more independent.
So you're saying there are problems around DCPS's survey?
Well, I don't know that there are problems or not problems. I know that the rest of us don't see the results of it, and I think it's important to understand why teachers are leaving. And so that's one. And second, I don't know the extent to which, when teachers respond, the extent to which they're candid. I just can't speak to that. Certainly, we know there are issues with people being candid, whether that's less so once they leave. I can't really speak to that.
So let me ask you this. OSI can ask for whatever data it wants now. The auditor can ask for whatever data she wants now. Soon, we will have the Research Practice Partnership, and they can ask for whatever data they want. So do we really need to legislate a fourth agency getting into this?
We're not talking about a fourth agency. We're talking about OSI collecting data that is not now collected. I mean, to your point, it was great that OSI produced that report last fall. That was the first time they had reported it. So what we're saying is, yeah, that's good. Please do it every year. We all want to see it. That should not be left just to OSI, we don't think, is. We need to say, the city wants to see that data on a regular basis, and we want to see it on a school-by-school basis, and we want these other issues reflected as well. So it's not a fourth agency. And as I said, I don't think this is the job of the RPP. As for the auditor, you know, again, the auditor does things that are important but on a somewhat ad hoc basis. And what we're asking for here is for this to be part of the regular data that the city sees. You have acknowledged, as have others, teacher retention is a huge issue in this city. And if we want to keep on top of it, we need to have regular data on it. We need to know how we're doing.
So if OSI simply added to what it collects, the the data about name and type of teacher, no, 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 the number of teachers who left the profession without remaining in the field of education, the number of teachers who left their employment to teach in other states. If they simply added that, then we wouldn't need the bill?
So those are, it's, the main, an exit survey would capture a lot of different information, including where did people go? So I think focusing on specifically those questions, there would be an easy part of an exit survey where you said, where did you go next? So I'm not sure why that is focused on so much. I will say, the other data that's not collected now, because I think that this is a minor part of that, we don't get school-by-school data from OSI. We don't get information on the teacher prep programs. We don't get, and we don't get information on the turnover rates at each school, except for when we hire a contractor to go deep into council databases. I think those are the main ones. I may be missing one. But that was, that's the gist.
So let me ask you this. Do you have problems getting information from OSI? The state board, from time to time, wants to know something. I'm not speaking specifically regarding this. I'm speaking more generally. The state board wants something, I assume, if you want it, and you think OSI has it, you ask OSI, do you have problems getting, getting?
Yes. I mean, I would say this, if you're speaking to that last paragraph in the bill, it's about, it's about OSI. It's also about other agencies. But yeah, I would say there's, we, as Ms. Young said, we work well on those things that statutorily we're supposed to work on together, and we do, and we appreciate it. But I'll give you one example of some data that we have wanted. In fact, we passed a resolution on it, which is, you know, half of our students in the city are considered at risk. Those students are in multiple different categories. Some of them are really in extreme situations. They're homeless. They're on TANF. They're in foster care. And some of them are in impoverished, but substantially less extreme circumstances. They're on SNAP, for example. And it's very, and it would be, it's very important to understand when we look at the data at different schools, how the, you know, effectiveness, scores, and so on, improvements. To what extent are they taking place in one part of that at-risk population or all parts? That's an example thing that would be really important for the city to know. And it's an example of something that we haven't been able to get. Another example is, you know, we want to do surveying of teachers, and we had, and we're not able to get the names. We have to sort of dig through and create our own roster. So it's examples like that as well. So no, I would say we're not, it's not easy. It's not, often it's not easy to get the data.
I'm going to turn to Mr. Grasso. If I have another question, I have another minute and a half. Mr. Grasso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Wattenberg, for your testimony today. I, I, I was pretty clear on why this bill was asked for, but now I'm kind of confused. I'm, you know, I think your line of questions was spot on. You know, there are other places, I think, also where the state board could get information from if they don't get it directly from OSI, and that's important, I think, to note. Like, you've already mentioned, you get some of it from my own website at the committee, and the deputy mayor, I believe, has been doing some reporting as well that gets out public on some of this student information. But like, I'm confused, like, Ms. Wattenberg, I didn't notice that there was a exit survey requested even in this legislation. And so some of this seems like it's a work in progress. And frankly, for me, it seems like all of this could be resolved between better collaboration and conversations between the state board and OSI, and that there wouldn't need to be legislative act here. I mean, how many times are we going to have to come back and come back and come back and come back to make sure that you guys are getting exactly what you want at that particular moment? In particular, you mentioned in your testimony that you would be, the bill would be equalizing you with advisory neighborhood commissions. But again, I don't, I don't buy that. I mean, there's nothing in the code that restricts the board or anyone from asking for information and trying to get from information. I think it's also important to note that you have to have a good relationship, and you have to have a good reason why an agency would produce data. I think the bill also asks for control over the format and procedures for OSI to even release this information, which appears to me like you're trying to make OSI maybe your staff for this report. I'll give you a chance to try to clarify all this, because I'm really confused why we need this. And certainly, like the chairman has noted, we have multiple avenues to try to get data out in a responsible way. Plus, it appears to me, from everything that OSI said today and in the past, that they have worked as hard as they can to give the state board as much data as they can give them. But this seems to flip it on its head and say that the state board is now going to have OSI working for the state board. And that's certainly not where I want to go with this. So I'll give you a chance to explain it if you don't mind. And I'll just listen for a minute and see if you can clear this up. I'm very confused as to why we need legislation.
Yeah, sure. Let me be clear. First of all, our goal here is not for us to do one more report. Our goal really is to get out of doing this report. At this point, we are the agency that has done the regular reporting on teacher retention. We are very appreciative that that has spurred a greater interest in this, and OSI and DCPS voluntarily did such reports last year. But as the chairman asked Ms. Young, there's not an intention to do that on a regular basis. The purpose here is to ask OSI to do a regular annual report that will make clear to the public, to the full public, not just to the state board, to the public what is going on in terms of teacher attrition, the demographic information, so we know where it's happening, who it's affecting, what teachers are leaving, and why they're leaving.
That makes it clear. Then I definitely disagree that we need to have legislation to make this happen. And if you want OSI to put out a report on teachers and teacher retention, then I don't understand why the legislative body has to intervene here. Can't you have the kind of relationship that you need to have to get? I mean, it seems to me like everybody agrees that having this information is important, might even be a threshold amount of data that's necessary to make a decision on what we think is valuable in keeping teachers in their positions. All of that makes sense to me. I don't understand why we need statutory involvement here to make that happen. And that's where I'm confused.
Okay. I mean, look, the reason is because we haven't, because we haven't gotten it. That's, there have been calls for this for quite a while.
They did a report last year, Ms. Wattenberg. They did it. They did the work. They put, you might not have liked the results, and you might not have liked the amount of data they put out, but they actually did. You just said in your own testimony that they did it because you provoked them to do it, and that DCPS is doing it because you provoked it. So you're making progress. Why would we want to put this in the statute? Then next year, you're going to come back to the council and say, actually, can you tweak that a little? Because we're not actually getting what we need. And rather than doing the hard work of setting up relationships and working with these entities and getting a good relationship going so that you get this data, which I think is a more appropriate approach.
Well, I would just say, I, clearly, we don't think that's going to be the best way to accomplish it. It's important information. We've been raising it for a number of years. We took up the responsibility of doing it. In that time, OSI has done one report. DCPS has done one report. There's no evidence of when they will come again. And as I say, they weren't on a school-by-school basis. They didn't include the teacher prep programs and so on. And as to why they don't do it, I mean, we can build up a relationship. But I think, look, a lot of this stuff, it's statutory, right? There's a statutory responsibility for OSI to work with us on some things, and they do. And we work well together. And where there's not a statutory obligation, there's a great interest. I understand this. This is true of all agencies, right? If I'm not required to do it, I'm not likely to do it. So I don't think it's about working harder or less hard on a relationship. It's about making the statement and requiring on the part of the city that we provide this data, which clearly, based on all the people who testified today, is really desired by an enormous number of people.
I said, I agree with that. I do not believe, though, that it is necessarily best attained by doing legislative action. You know, I don't have any more questions, but I am a bit confused. I mean, on one hand, you say that, you know, DCPS does these exit interviews. We know they do these exit interviews. I've met with them many times about teacher data and all the exit interviews that they do. But then you say they don't do these exit interviews, and they don't.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I don't know what's unclear. They do them, and they're not, and they're not transparent. You can see them. Nobody else.
Interrupt me when I'm speaking.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Do not interrupt.
I'm sorry. It's a delay in the, in the audio. I did not mean to interrupt.
I did not even take a breath there, so I appreciate if you didn't. The fact of the matter is that I know that DCPS does a lot of work in trying to understand what makes teachers happy, how to keep them in their positions, and how to help continue to train them. And the fact is that you may not agree with the approach that they take. Does not give you the right to then pass legislation to try to put more restrictions on OSI's work and to try to control what OSI is doing. And I think that is really where we are on this, and I certainly can't support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I make one response?
I did not ask a question. If you want to give her time to respond, that's fine, Mr. Chairman.
I will give her a minute. You were done with your questions, Mr. Grasso? Ms. Wattenberg?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say with regard to the lack of clarity, my point is, I think, clear is, yeah, I know DCPS conducts these interviews. My point is that the rest of the city doesn't have access to them. There's a lot of people that are interested in this issue of teacher retention, and it would be very helpful to have this data. And my point on the, on the exit survey was, it's being done, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a huge new cost.
And Ms. Wattenberg, were you saying that the DCPS does a survey, but it's not available to the state board?
Correct. And it's not public, period. I don't even, I'm not even sure that it's available to the staff in a school. There is some information related to satisfaction that is not available even at the school level. I'm not sure if that's, that wouldn't be the exit survey. I'm sorry. That's the, that would be the satisfaction survey. Take that back.
Ms. Wattenberg, you, you made reference in your testimony to a provision analogous to ANC's. Is that the provision on the last page of the bill? The state board shall have access to district government officials and to all district government official documents and public data pursuant to D.C. Code 2-531.
Yes.
Material to the exercise. So that's what that's meant to parallel.
Yes, yes. It's really not strictly about, it's not strictly about OSI. It's broader.
So we're going to wind down this hearing, but I think what I'm, I think one way of maybe kind of summarizing my understanding of the state board, I'm not really trying to get at everything that they want in this bill, is that Is that. This information about teacher turnover is very critical. And that, um. Aussie did a. Report a year ago, came out with a report in 2019. But we need something with more regularity and maybe even something more comprehensive.
Exactly. Exactly. More regular at the school level, because so much of this is school-based. I mean, if you want to understand. Uh, the extent to which we have diverse, a diverse teaching force, which is important. You need to be able to look at the school level, to the extent that uh, retention is higher or lower at different schools. What are the, you know, which schools, what are the demographics and so on? Um, and also the, the information about teacher prep programs, certification. Certification, uh, uh, of teachers is not on the report card for some schools, so yes. Regular and, um, more, not exhaustive, but a specific set of more.
All right, thank you. Um. I'm going to remind everybody, because we're about to end the hearing, that the record will close in two weeks. That is at 5:00 PM on November 6th, 2020. This has been a hearing on Bill twenty-three dash five one five, the statewide educational data warehouse amendment act 2019, which had been introduced at the request. Of the state board of education. Uh, thank you, Ms. Wattenberg, and even though I think the other witnesses may have left, thank you to each of them. And to our colleagues. Uh, Mr. Grass, do you have a parting word, or shall I adjourn us?
Thank you so much for picking this up and for hearing from us. Thank you very much.
Time is ten, eleven fifty-four in the morning, and this hearing is adjourned.